Good morning, everyone. We'll get started with our council meeting today. I'd like to remind everyone to please be sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivor Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. And Councilwoman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be here today, God, in Gaston, Alabama. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our city. We pray, God, for wisdom and guidance in the things that we talk about and do today. Father, we pray for safety for our citizens. We pray, God, that people will respond in a like mind for safety, God, and we just pray for your ultimate safety over all of us. We pray for all of those that are in both of our hospitals and our nursing homes and those that are at homesick. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will call on Mrs. Gaither for an update on COVID-19.
A couple of quick other updates. DHS grant applications are due to EMA by this Friday so that we can review them and submit them to state. So we need departments that are submitting for that. We already have the police department's submission. Also, we were approved disaster number 4555, in which the City of Gaston was included. Those were the Easter Sunday tornadoes and wind events. So we'll be working with Public Works and Finance on how to be reimbursed for some of those costs that were affecting us as of then. Onto COVID, I know that, you know, last week, we told you we could not open our cooling stations due to COVID this time, and we have been doing hydration stations. They've gone wonderfully. We've had to refill some of the stations several times. Those again are Dwight Baptist Salvation Army has also opened at the back entrance. Just knock and then they'll bring you water. Then also Family Success Center, and they're also giving away masks to help with us. So we really appreciate all the efforts that they're doing. EMA staff on Thursday and Friday did the trolley stops and put out water at all of those locations. And then today, they're going to go do some of those locations again and do, I'm sorry, I just got a text. I was looking. Can't multitask right now. Then they're going to do again this afternoon, some of the trolley stops and locations that are out there. Our numbers today have come in again, and I wanted to get you the most current, so that's what the text was. Overnight, we have 66 new cases, and that brings us to a total of 1422. Our seven-day average yesterday was 41, so that brought our average up to 45.43 by having 66 new cases today. Forty-one percent of those are in the age range of 25 to 49, and then 20% of those are in the age range of 50 to 64. Our Gaston Regional numbers for today is Gaston Regional Census is 192. They have 34 in their ICU beds with eight beds available. They and Riverview both can expand if they have the staffing to do so. We just want to make sure everybody knows that. Currently, they have 26 COVID patients in-house. We are up to, well, let me get Riverview first. Riverview has a census of 95. At the moment, they have no critical care beds available, and they have 42 COVID patients in-house. So that number has greatly increased. Our death total also went up since the last time we spoke. We're at 15 now. So again, our thoughts and prayers are always with those families that are affected, but especially with those who have lost a loved one due to this. The other item that I was going to mention was on August the 5th, we're still on for a COVID testing day at Antioch Baptist Church. We're shooting for 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. We'll also be giving out masks that day. If the heat and disease are going to be too high, we'll change that probably to a 7:00 a.m. to a 10:00 a.m. timeframe. So we'll be watching that closely to give you all the update on the times and the, for those days.
What was that date?
August the 5th. After this one, as you know, a lot of our nurses are absolutely worn out. They're tired, and it's more of a strain for them to pack and load their things every day and go to a different location. We have a wonderful location for drive-through testing at our Edouard County Health Department, and that's where we are going to do testing that is open freely to the public after August the 5th. That'll give them some staffing relief, keeps them near a restroom, near a place that's cool. All the things that they need are stored there. We don't have to pack up and move. We don't have to come in the night before, nor Public Works, and take barricades and set barricades up. So in the long run, it'll save us some time, money, and effort, and most importantly, it'll save our nurses from having to do truly double time in what they've been responding to. And that was all I had for today. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held July 14.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve payment minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 10 through the 16.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Wakefield and confident to locate a Martin's Family Clothing Store at 1001 Rainbow Drive. This is to grant a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sale tax proceed for a period of three years from the opening date until a total of $85,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is a warning bid number 3433 for green covers for Twin Bridge Golf Club. The purchasing agent has recommended to bid be awarded to Oak's Associate LP, and the amount is $15,420. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Design Review Board. And this appoints Jonathan Copeland, Scott Heisman, Gregory Hall, and Ben Conley for the term expiring June 30th, 2021. And it appoints Chris William and reappoints Kevin Ferguson and Ricky Hunter for the terms expiring June 30th, 2022. It appoints Neil Minton and reappoints Kelvin Sylvie, Wesley Williams, and Lance Smith for the terms expiring June 30th, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorized in agreement with Ford Howard and Canut PC, and this is for legal representation to recover the amount of the city's insurance deductible as related to an automobile accident which occurred on February 20th, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution accepting conveyance of property located at 1300 Monovestal Drive, and the owners have offered to donate this property to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
There are new business. There's not any new business today. Department reports, we have Ms. Wellington.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to give an update on First Friday and Summer Concert Series. Kay was unavailable to come this morning, so I told her I would give this update and briefing in the month of August. We are going to go ahead and cancel First Friday downtown in historic Gaston and also cancel the First Friday Summer Concert Series for the month of August. We will reevaluate in August for September, and depending on cases and our COVID pandemic will depend on our decision for the month of September. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have four citizen requests. We have Frank Leatherwood Jr. His topic is problems in Gaston. You have five minutes if you'll give your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Franklin Leatherwood Jr. I live near Boaz. My address, 198 Cary Lane East. I'm in Edgewood County. I was raised in Gaston. I want to say good morning to the Honorable Mayor, Madam President, City Council members, city employees, and citizens. I'm here today to try to address some issues from what I've heard here in these chambers and read in the newspapers. To start with, a person cannot be a traitor when your new country has legally seceded from the Union, but was illegally invaded by the North. You would be a traitor if you went against your neighbor, state, and new country. That is certain sure. I've heard Confederates called anti-American. That's a falsehood. They were anti-tariff or taxes, if you will, like most of us, I'm sure, do not like paying taxes. They were against an overbearing central government or anti-big government, if you will, after all the official titles, Confederate States of America. My ancestor worked on the railroad in Georgia, right alongside state-owned slaves, state-owned the railroad. He had to work with him, his brother too. And he had five kids, the youngest being my great-grandfather. He went off to war. Why did he do that? He didn't own slaves. I mean, he done that because the South was, had been assaulted for decades. He could have been at Zim from fighting in the war because he was, what we call nowadays, an essential worker, a railroad. But yet, he goes off. It's kind of like beating a dead horse trying to get the point through to some folks, that most Southerners did not own slaves, people. Only the rich people did, and even like 10% are less than the population. And even some of those only owned slavery too, which slavery is wrong over there. I told you all that. I'm against slavery. There's no doubt it, but it still exists in this world and even over here with cartels with sex slaves and such. But the Southerners that went and fought for the Confederacy did what any decent honorable person would do when invaded by troops from the North. They went off to defend their families, homes, and state. It was like most conflicts. It was a rich man's war and a poor man's fight. If you study history and you're unbiased about when you study the history, then you could be more fair when you decide to go and judge other folks and groups. I'm willing to bet that y'all didn't know that Lieutenant General Nathan Bedford Forrest had at least 50 of his slaves served with him and rode with him. Most of those men served as bodyguards or trusted scouts. Forrest freed them before the War for Southern Independence ended in 1865. If Forrest was such a bad person to get such a bad route, then please tell me why one of those men didn't shoot him dead. The fact is, Forrest troopers were usually heavily armed with two to six revolvers, a carbine or shotgun, or a carbine and a shotgun, or two shotguns. They were heavily armed usually. Not a single one of those men deserted. In fact, after the war, most of them continued to work for Forrest on President's Island off of Memphis and Mississippi River, and also during his ventures in the railroad business. Out here is a statue of Emma Samson. It's not only a statue, it's memorial to all Confederate State soldiers and veterans that served from this county, Edgewood County, a tombstone, if you will. And here is a list of all known Confederate veterans from Edgewood County. This is a petition, if you will. And here's another list. In 1911, the Emma Samson Memorial out here was heavily overgrown with weeds and trees. So if it was a white supremacist monument or memorial or statue, whatever you wish to call it, then why did that happen? I just know that me and there's about 130 million other citizens that have Southern blood running through their veins, and most of us are tired of this genocide of our Southern history. On the 8th of July, I spoke with Black Lives Matter Gaston right out here, and it turned out a lot better than I thought it would, and they were peaceful. And it was a cordial meeting. Now, there was a couple of clueless white girls that were hostile. We came to conclusion that it is the media that is keeping this going and dividing their people, and y'all can see that happening every day.
Mr. Ledbetter, your time is up, and I want to say this. While I'm here, your topic was problems in the Gaston area, and I want to stay true. According to our rules, it says, "A person may speak on any subject regarding city and municipal government." And so, I mean, basically what you did was give us a history lesson, but from this point on and coming, if you're going to talk about what your topic, I really would appreciate it. All right? And everybody that's coming forward from this point on, whatever you say that you're going to talk about, that's what we want to hear about. The next speaker is Demetrius Castleberry, Community Education. Latitia Moore, Next Step Forward in Our Community. Your name and address, please.
My name is Latitia Quintonya Moore. I reside at 402 Henry Street. And what I'd like to talk about is steps in moving forward. As the gentleman that spoke before me, he provided us with a history lesson. I appreciate it because if we don't study our history, we're bound to repeat it, and that is what's gotten us here. It's not for me, and I'm sure for other people, but I'll just stick to me. As a resident of Edouard County, Gaston, Alabama, with parents both raised and born here, my identity is not rooted in any concrete or material. However, the history surrounding this concrete and material has not been positive for myself or people like me. In 2020, I still face small microaggressions every day. I'm not here to change anybody's heart because that's between you and your God that you serve. I'm here to simply state that I would like to see Gaston move forward in a positive, peaceful manner because I've been coming to Gaston prior to moving to Gaston since I was 10 years old, and I've seen no forward progression. I don't even see why we have to debate. You know, I understand history and proud heritage, but on the other side, that was hijacked for some. So, you know, with all due respect, I just feel like both sides should be heard and be able to speak openly. And as he stated, Emma Samson is a tombstone, and this, last time I checked, all tombstones belong in cemeteries. I'm not saying destroy this monument. You can have what you want, but I can't think of any time that I want to reflect on my history or my heritage. I don't have a particular statue or monument that I can visit. When I got up every morning and I put on the United States Army uniform to protect this country, I didn't state, "I'm only going to protect these people, these people." It was lottie-dottie, everybody, and I'd do it again. I'd do it again. I don't think that we need to, I don't need the history because that's just what that is, history.
Thank you. Thank you. Tamika Williams, unity, love, peace.
Amen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Unity, the state of being united or joined as a whole. We as human race must unify ourselves for the better of our city's future. We must unify to overcome the hurt, the pain this city and the nation is fighting through due to our city's nation's past history. To change the future of history, our people are definitely, to change the future of history for our youth because they are our future. United we stand, divided we fall. Love, love, the biblical definition is love, agape love, is patient and kind. Love is not envious or boastful or arrogant or rude. It does not insist on, it does not insist on our ways, our own ways. It is not irritable or resentful. It does not rejoice in the wrongdoing, but rejoices in the truth. It believes in all things. It hopes all things, endures all things. Love never ends. Love is just that, love is also unconditional, graceful, and yet free. Peace, a state of being in a period which there is no war, a war has ended. We are not only at war with a diseased country, we are at war with self, government, each other, et cetera. In order for this city to be at peace, we must first recognize our own city's faults and mishaps. We must find a resolution for this city's issues. Peace is a concept of a social friendship and harmony in the absence of hostility and violence. In order to survive in this world today, we must have peace. Peace be still. You can pray until you faint, but unless you get up and try to do something, God is not going to put it in your lap. Fannie Lou Hager.
At this time, we'll have comments from the mayor and council. My five-minute rule is still in place. Mayor?
I just want to comment on the COVID.
Is your mic on?
I just wanted to comment on the COVID stuff. If you notice all the numbers, you'll be getting some more in the next day or two. It sort of keeps going up, so we're going to have to bear down really hard to drive this stuff up. And, you know, wearing the mask and be careful about groups or parties, or a lot of people going to have to eat together. I know everybody likes to do that. I do myself, but we've got to be really careful to start getting these numbers going the other way. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Well, yes, Madam President, and I would like to say to the governor of this great state of Alabama, thank you.
You're kidding.
Thank you for your courage to mandate masks. Thank you for trying to save people's lives and over politics because I know you're probably catching it because you have some of these people just, and you're not worrying about a vote. So, and she let the city council off the hook. She did, so, because, you know, some didn't want to vote for it. But anyway, I appreciate it, and I also want to say thank you to Mr. Tony Reddick, our superintendent, for having the courage to do online schooling, and I know you're catching it, but we support you, I support you, and I support the Board of Education. We put our kids' lives, we put in our kids' lives ahead of them going into that classroom and possibly catching the COVID-19 or spreading it to someone. So until we get our numbers down, everybody wants to go back to normal, but I don't know if we ever get back to normal. But if everybody wear a mask for about six to eight weeks, we could cut these numbers way down and then we could go back to normalcy. So I just want to say thank you to those two people, and please, whether you want to wear the mask or not, please wear it. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Just want to remind everybody about the census. Please make sure you fill your census out. I know it's something that can get pushed to the back of the priority list with everything going on in the world, but I'll say it every chance I get, until we're done with this, please fill your census out. I also want to thank the governor for the mask ordinance. That's something that I think the president made clear, that it was a state issue that needed to be handled by the states, and we've seen different states handle it different way, and I'm proud of Governor Ivey for stepping up and doing that. I think it's something, I think it's a small sacrifice that we can all make to get past this, and I've used this analogy before, but it's like taking your antibiotics. We've been through all this stuff. We've gone through all this economic hardship. We've been through all this stuff, and then we get to feeling better and we stop taking our antibiotics when we got three days worth left, and then you get sick all over again, and that's what we're doing. So to the people that are tired of this, the single best way to get out of this is to wear that mask and let's move beyond this. Obviously, we've got some great news today, or yesterday, on a vaccine that's coming along. Obviously, we've got some great news today, or yesterday, on a vaccine that's coming along. They expect maybe by the end of the year, they'll have that in circulation. So that's great news. So this isn't a permanent situation. It's just a temporary situation, so please wear your mask. And another thing is please continue to support local businesses. There's a lot of local restaurateurs and business owners who are really worried that because of this mask ordinance, people will just choose not to come out. I'm telling you, that's a mistake. You can't blame these businesses for these state mandated mask ordinances. Please continue to support local businesses. And to all the small businesses in this community, please remember that we did start a fund to give up to $3,000 grant to any small business in the city of Gaston that's eligible. They can contact Eric Wright for more information, or excuse me, Lisa Rosser and Lisa Osborne and Kay Moore are administering that. Sorry, that's clear as mud, but if you are a small business and you're interested in that $3,000 grant, contact Lisa Osborne or Kay Moore. Lisa, do you have something? Yeah, you want to add to that? Is that okay, Madam President?
Yes, I can.
Anyway, that's all I have, Madam President. If you would just make some comments.
Yeah, your five minutes was fired up anyway.
I came under.
I just wanted to remind the council as well that last week, last week, week before last, the state approved $100 million in grant funding. And you can contact me or Eric or Kay and we can send you, it's up to $15,000 per small business.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Even if you receive PPP money.
It just can't be used for the same thing that you use your PPP money for, but if you've, even if you've gotten a PPP loan or an economic injury disaster loan, you can still qualify for this $15,000 in state grant funding. You just can't spend it on the same stuff you spent the PPP in the EIDL loan.
Exactly. And it's first come, first served, and it just opened.
Lisa, what are you doing up here anyway?
Go ahead.
Wakefields. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
He's already explained everything. I just want.
No, I was going to ask.
It's two different grants.
Is the application, is the applications are ready? Are they ready to be given out?
They opened the applications last week. The city application has not been approved yet through the state. Our 3,000, but there's a $15,000 grant out there through the state. And if you go to revenue, what is the link?
That's what I was trying to interject. It's in your My Alabama Taxes profile. So if you're a business owner and you pay your sales tax online, you just log into your My Alabama Taxes profile and the opportunity to apply for that $15,000 grant is contained within that, the same place you go to submit your sales tax.
And because I'm a nonprofit, I can't get into that program to help people with it. But from other small businesses that have applied for that, they say that it's very simple. It's a very simple process. So it's not, you just, like you say, you have to prove that you've paid your taxes and all of that, but once you do that, you can apply for the money.
And even if you're a business owner and you don't file your taxes online through the My Alabama Tax Portal, you can actually, it's only a one-page application to get a login for that. So it's a one-page form. You fill it out, you get a login, you log in, you apply for the $15,000 grant, and that's on the state level and then on the city level. Hopefully, we'll have that application ready for the $3,000 grant here. So small businesses, please keep that in mind.
Councilman Re, he used up your five minutes.
You ain't the first to have.
I really don't know what to say after. So now I'm really confused. I've got all this information I'm getting at one time. I do want to thank the majority of the speakers that came this morning. I think it was enlightening, it's due time that that's the way you come and talk. I want to thank Lisa really on Wakefield, and I'm sure some more people were involved, but Gray Martins up here, they need us and we need them, and it's a good mix. Thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, Madam President. Want to just again echo the numbers that Deborah Gaither shared with us. Overnight, we had 66 positive cases. That's a pretty big number. It brings the average, I think she said, to 45. Yeah, we're doing more testing, but you know, if we're doing more testing and nobody's sick, then those numbers wouldn't be that high. So I kind of prescribe to the numbers of what's in the hospital, and it's not very promising. So we really need to focus on wearing our masks, social distancing, washing our hands, and just being smart and thinking of others. We've got healthcare workers that I personally am friends with, and they're worn out. They're scared because they don't want to bring this home to their family. Our first responders, you know, they pull up and they're out there. They don't know who they're talking to or what's there. So, you know, they're trying to protect themselves just as much as possible. So think of others. Just, you know, take a step back and just think of others and just wear a mask. It's not for effort. It's not that hard. Also want to echo the schools. It's a hard decision, you know, sitting up here being on city council, we have hard decisions to make. Our cohorts at Gaston City Board of Education and Tony Reddick, they've had to make some hard decisions and choices. My wife's a kindergarten teacher in the school system, so I know full well kind of the whole gamut of what's been talked about and what's going on. They're kind of like in a position where we find ourselves sometimes. There may not be a one right answer, but this is a great learning opportunity and talking moment for our parents to share with their children how you can go about having a conversation and how you can disagree, but yet do it civilly and yet do it smartly. So I urge parents to do that. Take a chance at the dinner table to have a conversation with your children and talk about these things. Public Works in our pre-council, Mike Hilton, thank you, Public Works, you know, they're doing 75 to 80 tons a day. Let that sink in, 75 tons a day of debris. The routes are getting a little bit quicker because they were doing 100 tons a day. So we get a lot of calls on that. Just bear with us, they are working their routes just as fast as they can work them. And the census is real important, you know, where sometimes we can lose sight of some other things that are really crucial. This is, we do this once every 10 years. We do a census once every 10 years, so please fill out your census. Please do that. Ask your friends if they've done that. And then last but not least, every week you hear me talk about the food giveaway at First Baptist Church. I've been questioning on that just a little bit. The reason why I talk about that, that's where I go to church, and we're a licensed agency, a member agency with the Food Bank of Central Alabama. They asked us if we would be a location to hand out food, and we agreed to do that. So we, every Wednesday, we get a truck at 10:00 and a truck at 12:30. And we're in there unloading those trucks and putting food in bags, and then at 2:00 we give those, that food out to the general public. It's right at the corner of Fifth Street and Walnut Street. We don't require any kind of identification. You just come and get the food, and we're glad to do it. Hopefully, we'll be doing this, I believe, through, at least through the end of this month and possibly through the end of August. It depends on what, how the Food Bank does. So just to let you know that that's why I talk about that every week. There's a lot of people that really need this food. You wouldn't believe the thank yous that we get, how people say, "If it wasn't for y'all doing this, I wouldn't have any food." So, you know, I'm going to continue talking about First Baptist Church because that's where it takes place. And if I don't say First Baptist, you won't know where to come to. Okay? So thank you for that, and thank you, Madam President.
Councilman William?
Thank you, Madam President. Do want to echo Councilman Back's sentiment towards the speakers, for each speaker. Thank you for civil discourse. I mean, I can't reiterate that enough. It's not necessarily a mandate that we agree, but I think it is a mandate that we have civil discussion, even when we disagree. So again, thanks to each of you for your civil discourse. And the theme that I think, again, that we should be adopting throughout these discussions in terms of societal relief is society versus racism. Racism is in a very clear and distinct minority in this country, and we need to make sure that we remind racists of that fact. Society against racism, and you'll hear me say that quite often here over the next few months and years, society versus racism. I want to reiterate the point that was made relative to the governor and the mask mandate. We were indeed thrown a lifeline, and I do appreciate that. I think every city in the state appreciates that, and that exemplifies leadership. We needed that leadership. I think it's a whole lot easier when the state establishes a strong position and the cities know that they can get in line and support that. So again, I appreciate it. And I'll, you know, I'll throw out some very basic, some very basic factual scientific points as it relates to this COVID-19 pandemic. We know for sure, and we were talking about this before the council meeting, we know for sure that this is, that this is a respiratory condition. There's no doubt that what we're fighting, COVID-19, coronavirus, whatever you want to call it, is a respiratory condition. We know for a fact that respiratory conditions, for the most part, we know that this condition and any other respiratory condition attacks the lungs. Those are facts. Can't argue that. You also know that respiratory conditions, for the most part, get to the lungs through your nose and through your mouth. Now, there's some, there's some people that may argue that they also get there through the mucous membranes, but for the most part, through your nose and through your mouth. And so it is very clear that the data speaks to the fact that if you're trying to present something from getting to your lungs, one of the best and most surefire ways of exponentially reducing the chances that you contract that kind of infectious disease is by covering your nose and your mouth. Now, those are facts that you really can't argue. Now, you can have opinions all day about people dying with masks on and, you know, "I just don't want to wear a mask," and, you know, all those things, that's fine. You know, we live in a free country. But when you follow the facts, you follow the data, you realize that our governor made a wise decision and she supported all of the cities in that regard. So we appreciate that. The last thing that I have is I'd like to, you know, again, a couple of weeks ago, I made it clear that there were some people that, and the point that I made in all that and telling all those folks I love them is the vast majority of those folks live in foreign countries, and a number of them live here, but they're not black. And I joked with Johnny Cannon after the fact that I probably got more white friends than he does. And I still contend that I probably got more white friends than he does. But at the end of the day, you know, I love everybody, and that's because my God asked me to and demands that I do that. And so I want to tell the mayor, somebody that I highlighted is somebody that I love, want to tell him happy birthday today. We appreciate it. I think he's 30 for the third time today. I'm not sure about that. But no, did want to wish him happy birthday. And for those challenging the masculinity of me telling another man I love him, I just wanted to be clear, I do love the mayor, but I don't find him the least bit attractive. So I want y'all to understand that.
I'm glad to know that. You didn't love me too much at basketball practice.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, in line with things that are happening, I made an appointment of Councilman Wilson as chair and Councilman William as co-chair of a committee that will collaborate with the youth. And so they'll be getting organized and they'll be getting those who, I think there are two people who volunteered to be on this committee. This is a committee for collaborations, and maybe they can enlighten. I hear a lot of people come and say that Gaston is not moving forward. I think that, I hope that these two gentlemen will enlighten the people on some of the things that are happening in the city, some of the things that they could have been involved in a long time ago, but they were not. And so this is an opportunity to put your actions where your talk is. I'm going to say this, and I've been saying it lately. I grew up with my mother telling me that talk was cheap, but it takes money to buy land. So let's see all the talking that we're doing, all the things that you can see that the city needs to do. Now would be your opportunity to put those things into action. And so you have a committee now, you have two chairs, and we will move forward with that. If nothing else, the council meeting is dismissed. Adjourn.